From President Charbonneau saying he's trying to sign in. So I'm going to pause right there and see if we can get him signed in. Can you check our code? Make sure I got it right on the paper. He's trying to check in.
What are you doing after this?
Okay, so let's, let me give him a second. So the code is... What's the other meeting? Those of you that just joined us, hang in there everybody. We're trying to get our president of our council online. Shared the wrong one. Can we go back to the city manager? Go back here and look on this. And I'm on the first line, yeah.
What I would want to do here, I'm going to see if I... What happens when I just knock this person, go to this one?
It looks like I may have made a mistake, everybody. So we're trying to figure out how to rectify it before we move on. Thanks for your patience.
Oh, Joseph's in that one too, okay.
In which one?
He is in this one that's on the sheets. So I'll tell them.
Yeah, well, yeah, maybe leave that one up?
I don't know, leave this on too.
Okay. Good, you want me to just text Joseph? Yeah, I don't know how Ed got you.
Yeah. Hey Ed, we have a question for you. Since we're having a meeting issue, like a technical meeting, snap who's? How did you come about this meeting and know that this is the one?
Where did you click from?
Did you click from the website? Or was it?
Kevin, I so apologize for messing you up. Thanks for joining us by video. So, Mr. Clerk, will you note that our council president, Kevin Charbonneau, is with us as well?
I got it.
All right. And we're back to the drawing board. So are there, I'm going to ask if there are any additions or deletions to the meeting, to the agenda for this evening. Kevin, do you have anything you'd like to add or delete?
No.
Okay, Carter?
None.
John?
None, thanks.
Mr. Clerk?
No.
Okay, hearing none, there are no additions or deletions. So the next thing on the agenda is our consent agenda, which has quite a bit in it. So I'm just going to review what's in the consent agenda. We have the regular meeting minutes from April 7th, 2025. We have two sets of AP warrants from the 11th of April and the 18th of April. We have one payroll warrant from the 17th of April. And then we have liquor license, liquor licenses, vendor permits, special events. And I think there's some tobacco licenses and permission to sell liquor outside instead of inside. It's a whole packet. It was all there for anybody who wanted to go through it page by page. It includes requests from Miso Hungary, Cumberland Farms, a combination of requests for Eastside Tavern and La Belvedere, Jasper's, Wednesdays on the Waterfront, and American Legion. So all of that is in the consent agenda. So before I take a vote on the consent agenda, I'm just going to ask if there are any questions about any of those individual pieces.
No.
Okay. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to pass the consent, the full consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment, concerns from the community residents? Hearing none, any further comment from the council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you very much. And Jim, I'm going to sign this and pass it down to you right now. There we are, that's the minutes piece. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a request to name a council member as a backup or alternate for Representative Woodman Page, who serves as the Newport area representative to the NEK CB broadband board. And at the risk of it looking slightly like nepotism, my spouse is in the room, who is the one who's been trying to get all of the towns to get themselves into compliance. So I'm going to invite Kitty to come forward and just explain what's going on with NEK CB broadband.
Good evening.
You have to really project because the mic's not actually functioning.
It's not really, really working? Okay, it's a pretend mic?
It's a pretend mic.
All right, I can deal with that. My name is Kitty Ufford Chase, and I am Community Relations Manager for NEK CB. We are a communications union district, a CUD. There are nine of them in the state. And they were created by Vermont State Legislature in 2015 to find a way to really focus on actually, truly, getting high-speed internet to all the rural areas that don't have it in the 21st century. And there are quite a few up in this area, neck of the woods. So we started out with 51 towns of the Northeast Kingdom. And then last year in August, we merged with our sister CUD to the Southwest called CV Fiber. And that added another 20 towns to our CUD, all the ones around Montpelier. And so we are on this mission to get high-speed internet to all the places that don't have it. That does not include a lot of Newport City. Where really, our mission is to get it to places that don't have any alternatives. And we have constructed over 800 miles of fiber. We are doing fiber optic cable network. And we expect to be close to 3,000 miles by the end of it. So we've got a ways to go. I didn't realize that just the NEK is 2,000 square miles. So, we are in this work, and our governing board is made up of a representative, a primary representative, and an alternate from every town in our district. So that includes Newport City. You have Representative Woodman Page, who has been your primary rep, and he's been doing a great job. But we have also traditionally had an alternate in case he can't come to one of the meetings. Now, there are four governing board meetings a year instead of eight because we're just a larger group. We do have an executive committee that meets twice a month as well. So we're looking for someone that is not a heavy lift at all, although they will get emails, like quite a few emails, I'm afraid. But they don't have to have any experience. They don't have to have tech experience or anything. They have to have a desire to want to see this happen in the Kingdom, even if it's not impacting Newport City too much. But I'm really glad that Newport City is a part of it, and that you're committed to be a part of it, and that through Woody Page, you have been a part of it. So previously, Chris Vachon was our alternate. And so now I'm bringing up the possibility of you appointing somebody else or finding somebody else. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I was just going to ask, so there's mesh, which is like in Newport. How similar or different is that organization? Because I know that that's a way that people can access internet at a low cost. But then how does, is NEK broadband ever going to be able to connect? Or is it just because we have options here in the city for broadband?
Potentially NEK broadband might come. I should say that our organization legally is NEK CB. However, we are retaining our two brand names and websites. So we have CV Fiber still, and we still have NEK broadband, which is why I'm still wearing my NEK broadband button. The mesh system is wireless. And we are fiber. So it is a completely different way of doing things. And the mesh system works here, which is wonderful for downtown Newport and provides a real low-cost option. We are much bigger in size, and much bigger in mission and what we have to accomplish. But we are, they're nonprofit, we are too, as a union district. But we're a community-owned infrastructure. So as we build this infrastructure, it's going to be owned by all of us. And so we are kind of different scale levels and different approaches. But with great admiration for what mesh has been able to accomplish here in downtown Newport.
Are there questions from the community?
Yeah. Why are you only looking at the council for a warm body to put on your committee when they already are on empty in other committees? And they probably just be there as a token? As opposed to finding somebody in Newport? And there are a lot of people in Newport who would have real interest and probably some knowledge.
Okay. Wonderful question. So the members of our governing board are people appointed by city councils or select boards. So I'm actually asking you all to find somebody. I can't go around and find 71 people in 71 different towns and get them approved by their select boards and so on. So I'm bringing it to every select board or city council and saying, we need somebody. Please, please find somebody. And I think that's great. And I would love if there were people in Newport that even though they may not get it, they may be really excited to see it happening around them. And we may be coming to the outskirts of Newport where there aren't. And eventually, maybe we'll be in Newport. But we know that right now it's not our priority because you all have options, and we're getting the people who don't.
What's the timeline? When do you have to have these people appointed always?
Ideally, we're coming up on our annual meeting of our organization, which is Thursday, May 8. And it would be nice to have someone then, but we accept them whenever we can get them. And I do believe Woody is planning on attending that meeting. So it's really just a backup. But if they are excited and want to get involved, there are many more ways to get involved than just coming to board meetings as well. And I do orientation for all the board members. I meet them wherever they are and bring them on board.
So Pam actually named the question that I was going to ask. And just because Chris was the one who's done this in the past does not mean it means to be a council member. So given the fact that we have some time, I think I would suggest that we take this as a point of information, add, put the word out, and see who might be interested in serving as our backup. Can alternates go to these meetings if the primary is going?
Absolutely. And we totally encourage them to attend all meetings. And they can attend our executive committee meetings as well and participate. So, yes. The more participation, the better.
I just, it's such a cool movement group, work, all of it. When I work with the municipalities around here, they're really excited. They're like, oh, they're laying one, they're stopping at this road. But then they're going to continue, and it's just this hype that doesn't stop.
Yeah, we wish we could get everywhere yesterday. But it's happening.
Yeah, it's truly like life's changing. I mean, it sounds, it's like a cliche, but it's, yeah.
Yeah. No, it's not. It is not a cliche. It is for real. It's really, really making a difference.
So I would entertain a motion that the council would spend the next two weeks actively seeking, you know, an ideal candidate for this, and then come back to make a decision that first Monday meeting in May.
Yeah. Sounds good. Because then I would have a chance to...
Exactly.
And if any candidates have questions, I'm happy to talk with them by phone.
I see a question back there from Adam.
What does it pay?
Doesn't pay anything.
Oh.
Okay. So do you want to make that motion?
I'll make my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, that council will actively seek a candidate, and that we will return to this two weeks from tonight at our regularly scheduled first meeting in May. Any other comment?
And if you don't find anyone by that particular meeting, that's okay. If you keep on trying, whenever they come on board, I'm ready.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Frank, you are back there in the corner. Great. Because you're on the agenda, the next two items, I think. All right. Really? I noticed you didn't poke your head up until the moment arrived. So the next item on the agenda is the questions around a stormwater permit for the Jackson Stonewall project. And Frank, I'd be grateful if you would come and describe what we're asking council to do.
So Tony Tangway's development of Jackson Street project, this is...
It's not working, but so project, just speak up.
Okay. Good evening. So we signed on as a co-applicant to this stormwater project somewhere about a year and a half ago. The permit's now becoming final. And we are asking you to sign an agreement in accordance with Tony Tangway's development to share both the permit cost and the maintenance costs and responsibility for the project going forward. At this particular point, we only own 15%. The rest of it's Tony's. What will happen is, I'm assuming that we're going to get a request, I don't see Tom here, at some point in the near future, for you all to take over the road. Once that process has completed itself, if you do decide to take the road over, you will then own a fire-ladder chunk of the stormwater project. And this just lays this out formally, so it's clear to both the city and the developer, and to future homebuyers, where the responsibility lays with this. Questions?
So this comes about because of all of the changes in the stormwater rules since the original Daigle permits in the late 80s.
Yeah, so what happened is that they ended up having to amend the Act 250 permit. So they ended up going through wetlands and historical and stormwater. And the stormwater obviously had some significant upgrades in the regulatory burden, I guess is the way I'd put it. So they ended up having, in fact, when Daigle did it, they didn't even need a stormwater permit.
The 15% garage remortgage, part of it that's within the existing municipalities, anyway?
Right. And we haven't taken any of Jackson or the new development over yet. So those few houses that are on, off the end of Jackson headed into the development are not, we do not own that street yet. It was never taken over. So basically, John, the entire road system, plus all the impervious of the roofs and the driveways, predicted impervious, is all Tony's at this particular point. And until he turns that infrastructure over to us, which is your decision when you would like to do that, then he owns the majority of the impervious surface. In other words, and we're going to run into this with some more, okay, the city cannot, in our view, accept responsibility for maintenance on property we do not own or do not have an easement for.
Any questions from the community? Jim, do you come to the floor? Turn the mic, please.
Sure. It's from Mr. Chingish.
Okay.
So what houses on Jackson Street are currently not city-owned?
So you know, as you're turning it, you know there's two entrances, one past Jay Walsh's house?
Two entrances?
To the new development. I don't have a map here, but...
Okay, well, you can access it on Stonewall.
Stonewall, excuse me, Stonewall, using the wrong shooting. So you know those houses on Stonewall before you get to the dirt?
Yes.
Those houses are not of ownership yet.
Correct, okay.
So Jackson Street, I'm sorry.
So it's Stonewall Street?
Stonewall.
All right. And then if the city does take the roadway over, are you going to need to amend the contract?
Yes.
Because I think the contract has specific percentages in there.
It does. And those were figured out with an engineer. So we'll have to revisit that when and if.
The city takes it over?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just had another question. The original contract, you said, was the city would pay 15%?
Approximately. It's in the contract.
Okay.
I didn't bring that contract with me. I think it's 15.8% right?
And when you say now we're going to split, the split that the city is going to split the costs, do you mean that we're going to pay 50%?
No, based on, based on the percentage of impervious surface. So whatever impervious surface we own, we pay the permit and the maintenance fees, and the balance would be paid by Tangway Homes.
It's going to be prorated.
Prorated.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the community?
Yeah, it actually says 13.5%.
Okay, there you go.
Any other questions? Carter, Kevin, or John?
No.
I'll just say, Frank and I met with Tony last week. And so, you know, it's our commitment to just try and make sure that we're not slowing this process down based on things that could be moved ahead. So this is just the next logical step in that process.
And did the attorneys check over the...
Yep, attorneys have fully reviewed this document.
Then that sounds good to me.
Okay, then I would accept a motion for the mayor to sign on behalf of the council the stormwater system maintenance agreement between the city and Tangway Homes Incorporated.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further comment? Hearing none, any further comment from the council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Don't go far, Frank, thank you for this. And I'm just going to sign this right now. It's the 21st day of April. And if you could pass that down to Jim, please. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the request by the DRB to reduce from nine to seven members. And Frank, if you would speak to that one as well.
So we had originally, a year ago, been moved to nine members. We actually, after recruitment, only ended up with eight. Jay Gonya, who now lives in Derby, doesn't prohibit him from being on the board. However, has decided that it is, he has other avenues he would like to explore with his free time. And Andrew Touche has obviously had to resign. So that leaves us with basically six members. We would like to request that you move down to seven. That keeps us at an odd number and doesn't put us at a risk. I think getting one person is realistic. Getting three in a short period of time is somewhat unrealistic. And I think that would allow us to avoid any quorum difficulties. Anybody else? I have two DRB members here, if they'd like to add anything, no.
And historically, it was seven members, and then...
When I started, we only had five. And then it was moved up, moved up, moved up. I think that the odd number is appropriate. Yeah.
Any questions from council? Any questions from the community? I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the number of members of the development review board be reduced from nine to seven.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. No further comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Oh wait, no, that's it. You're right. Sorry, you're right. You can go away now. Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is correspondence from the CanUSA 360 Arts Collaborative. Full disclosure, I was a part of trying to help create this arts collaborative. The idea from the beginning was to support the creation of a group of artists who would try and help create a small kind of microcosm, bi-national micro arts community, basically. There was a request, apparently that came in sometime in December. I don't remember ever seeing it. I think somehow it got lost in the shuffle in December, January, perhaps with budgeting, which was no small deal at that time. So when this came in, I thought the most appropriate thing would be to at least share the questions and find out perhaps if there's a council member who'd be willing to follow up with Lynn Ruble and other members of the collaborative to just look for ways that we can be supportive until an opportunity rolls around again for an appropriation since we missed it this year.
I was wondering, while we're on this topic, how do folks get into, onto the ballot in this way? Like, is it just emailing, emailing the mayor, and then it can get lost in the shuffle and repeat? I'm just wondering what the process is, and then maybe identify what happened and how to prevent that too?
Jim can explain it better than I, but my understanding is that a petition is required.
Correct.
The council can choose to have it put on the ballot on their own, or they have to get a petition, 5% of the voters signing it.
With 5%?
Yep.
Which would be a threshold of how many voters right now?
No, it's a little over 200 now.
Wow, okay.
And once petition is turned in with 200 signatures, it...
It's a done ballot? Or someone can ask the council for consideration, and the council can choose to put it on? Okay. I didn't know the answer to that question either. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the community? Go ahead, Jim.
So, to whom did Canusa 360 send their correspondence asking to be put on the ballot? Do we know the answer to that question?
I don't know.
I don't know, we got a petition for that answer.
Yeah, there was no petition.
No. I skimmed over that letter, and I have a recollection that the letter was stating that they had reached out to somebody in the city to ask for consideration to be put on the ballot. But I can't recall to whom they sent that letter. Do we know the answer to that question?
All we know is what it says on the letter. I really don't know the answer to that question. What I know is what's stated in the letter, which is that... Where does it say it here?
The letter said something to the effect of, a request was made to be put on the ballot. I'm doing this for record.
Yeah, this one's written to mayor and council. So I assume whatever that letter was, was addressed that way. You know, at this point, what I would recommend is that, it seems to me to be appropriate for someone from council to follow up, make an apology. Because I think really what this was asking for was, was there something that was not done appropriately? And it could involve explaining that there are two ways that something can get on that appropriations list for a regular ballot. And then, you know, I think there's every reason to try and be supportive of such an effort. And we could just try and begin to build a closer relationship.
Does the city actually have a policy or procedure regarding appropriations? I know some towns have as a matter of policy or requirement that petitions be submitted, at least for the initial request. Some require petitions every year. The ones that require for an initial request typically provide that if a petition is submitted and the voters approve the request, then in subsequent years, if they don't increase the requested amount, they go on the ballot automatically. There's a lot of variation on the theme, but a lot of towns do have a specific policy or approach that they... policy or approach that they take, rather than an ad hoc, well, we'll approve this one because it sounds good, or, and put it on the ballot, but no, that one has to get a petition. In other words, they try to treat everybody consistently and have a policy that's clear upfront. So my question is, is there such a policy in Newport?
The only policy has been a verbal one, far as I know, since I've been here. Historically, the council, I won't say discourage people from asking, the council put it on, but they kind of like to have a petition. And John's right, if they've been on the petition for five years or something like that, have it increased, then they automatically go on, until they change the requested amount. If they change it up or down, you've got to get another petition.
Is there, is the 5% threshold petition established by charter, Jim? Or is it a decision of council?
I think it's in, I think...
It's a charter requirement.
That's true everywhere. I think it's a state statute.
Yeah, it's in the statute, too.
So I see a few hands. Jennifer Hopkins, you want to come to the fake mic, please?
Fake mic, okay.
Sure. It's a little levity in my life.
I think historically, Jim is correct. Back when I was on council, because of what was happening, it was required that if you increased your appropriation, you would have to go back for the additional 5%. If you was, were an add, you would. I don't know that there was any condition if you were a subtract, Jim. I think you could subtract, but...
To me, it just says, they said if they change the requested amount...
Yeah.
To me, that means...
Up or down, yeah, yeah. I think they probably wouldn't have checked it down.
Me, if they're going down, they...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
But I think since the 80s, it's been that way. But it's not ever been formalized.
So my only concern is, after having read that letter, it just seems like perhaps there was subjectivity involved in this decision to not bring it to the council. And I just think that we, as a council, need to, or you as a council, need to do something to not allow that to reoccur. So in the process of investigating how this happened, it would be interesting to know what the particulars were, and then adopt some sort of a policy or something to make sure that it can't reoccur. Thanks.
Further deliberation from the council?
I, I'm willing to respond to this, say that it sparks good discussion, expose maybe that we don't have the most clear-cut policies. And then also, I'm thinking about like a deadline for these, or, or incur the signatures, but something around like, I understand that if this was sent in December, it's just a hullabaloo time for our local government, whether they're turning around for a number of things. So it's kind of a hard time, but if there was an established deadline of, you know, would you like to be on, submit a petition? So just a number of things I'm thinking about.
Well, there are deadlines for petitions.
Oh, there are?
That works, actually.
Okay, excellent.
After many days before the election.
But it's not considerably in advance of what Carter's suggesting is something that would be done early enough so that it wouldn't get caught up in the budget work and everything else at the end of the year.
Oh, I recommend November, usually. But there is a date, certainly have to be in there.
Yes.
Yeah, like a submission date, and then if we wanted to have a meeting about that and have the whistle, take community...
Well, I'm intrigued, John, by your thought that maybe we just need to revisit the whole question and explore the possibility of creating a simple policy about this.
Yeah, and I don't think it needs to be very complicated, but it should be clear and consistent so that people know what the rules are upfront.
Kevin, do you have an opinion about this?
No.
Well, what if we set a date, you know, I'd say, given everything else on our agenda, maybe two, three months out, maybe three months out, midsummer, to try and revisit this and ask, since we were missing Andy tonight, we could revisit the question of how we get a draft of a policy before us, and then come back to this by a date this summer so that we can get some clarity about it. I like the idea of trying to make it a more objective process. I see your hand, yeah, hold on just a second. Any comment from you all about that possibility?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Pam?
I thought there was a policy.
To speak up, please.
I thought there was a policy, and my reason for saying that is when RCT was forcing themselves to waste many hours each month of their invaluable time, some of us came to the council, Anne was part of it, I was, and we asked if they could have the sort of five-year leeway then. And that was agreed to. It should be in the minutes somewhere, Jim. Do you remember that?
Yeah, I do, but I don't know if there's a written policy, so I know they agreed to the five years.
There was an agreement for that, and the only way that anybody could get put on to the ballot was if they submitted a petition.
Right.
There wasn't another route.
Okay, so I mean, I think I've got the point, unless, Anne, there's some new information you want to give us here?
There's only one other thing I would suggest is, if you didn't want somebody to wait until the next election, and you happen to be having a special election for some other reason, I don't know that it could be any objection to adding one more appropriation to the special election, if, if that would help out at all.
I think it's too late because the grand list was set as of April 1st, and the budgets could vote it on.
Yes, the appropriations, that's right, the budget for '25, '26. Okay, so I would entertain a motion that we revisit this item by no later than the first regular scheduled meeting in August, and that we, if there's a council member who would like to try and take the lead on doing the research on what policy might already exist, and looking at, if we can't come up with one, looking at comparable policies from a few other communities and coming back with some suggestions. I don't want to try and ask for that tonight with Andy not here. So the motion tonight would just be that we would return to this by the first meeting in August.
And would you like me to respond to this?
Yes, and in the meantime, I think it would be appropriate, as a courtesy, to follow up with Lynn Ruble.
Yeah.
So do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comment? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Jim, you got the language for that? All right. Thank you, everybody, that sounds like a smart move. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to go into executive session to approve summer staff hires for the REC department as per One VSA Section 313A 3. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, we are now in executive session. Danielson?
Yeah.
Jim, you ready? Okay, we are out of executive, executive session. No action was taken, and I believe our president has a motion. Go ahead, Kevin.
I'd like to make a motion that we would approve the two seasonal hires by the REC department.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, say no. Hearing none, the motion passes. Mike, you want to just let the room know what you just told us about in terms of where we are in summer hiring and how you're feeling about the summer?
So I think these are the last two hires on our list, and we are fully staffed for the season.
Very exciting, yeah, that's worth a while, yes, guys. Thank you very much, Mr. Rec Director.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to item nine. This is a declaration of intent for the tax increment financing district application. It's a preparation document, and there's, there's some legalese in it. So I'm going to, I'm the one who has been working with the attorneys on this one and with White and Burke. So I want to just give you all a little bit of background, and then I'm happy to try and answer questions. So this was a recommendation from White and Burke. It's basically a preparation document, it's one of many things that we're going to have to work on as if and when a, an actual TIF district application moves forward. So this is not committing us to anything yet, because there's no application to match it, it's just laying groundwork, so it's one less thing we have to do later on. I'll just give a kind of a global update on where we are first, which is that we've met now three times, once in person, with Stephanie Clark from White and Burke, Brian Gray, the economic development coordinator for Newport Downtown Development, has been mostly the person responsible on Newport's end for collecting data and information that White and Burke needs in order to move through the feasibility study, right? So just to remind everyone, what we've agreed with White and Burke is that they're doing two pieces of work for us this year consecutively, if the first piece warrants the second piece. So the first piece of work is a feasibility study that we are still, they're still telling us we can expect by mid to late summer, and that will basically look at what the definition, the likely definition of a TIF district should be, and then it will look at individual properties within the TIF district and try and do the math on what, whether those properties, whether the difference in value that we create in those properties will create enough of a delta, the difference between the current taxation paid and the future taxation paid, to justify any, any loans we might take out to do public infrastructure work for that property. So the feasibility actually looks pretty closely at what's the public infrastructure piece necessary for a building to go here, and what's the building likely to be worth on our grand list when we finish the project? And that's the, that's kind of what they're working on, so we can expect to hear a lot more from them toward the middle or end of summer. If that feasibility study appears to warrant moving ahead with a TIF application, then the phase two with White and Burke would be to spend the late summer and fall, and maybe early winter, working on the actual application to the state, which goes to the Vermont VEPSE, Vermont Economic Progress Council, I think is the C in that. And they are the ones who have the ultimate authority over whether or not Newport has granted permission to move ahead with a TIF district. So this document is designed basically to say, if we were to move ahead with a TIF district, it would be our, what we're approving tonight is to say, it would be our expectation that anything we can't cover from designated funding in order to cover the early years of, of the TIF, let's see, I want to make sure I say this right, it's a conversation I keep having with Anne over and over again. In the first few years of a TIF plan, before, after you've taken the money as a loan and before you've built the building that generates the higher level of value, that creates the tax increment to help pay that loan back, the question is, how does that loan get paid? And there are a variety of answers to that question. Sometimes the city might own property, you know, in St. Albans, they owned a piece of property, they were able to sell, and that money was designated by the city council to use to pay some of those early payments to cover so that it wouldn't hit the taxpayers. Or, you know, there are a number of ways you might go after that money, but one way that's kind of the stopgap is that the TIF rules allow the city of Newport to basically take part of the, the loan money to pay the loan back in those early years. And it's pretty much standard operating procedure. In fact, the language for this one, the boilerplate we started with was similar language that the city of Rutland has just worked on over the last year for their TIF district application. So tonight, all we're being asked is, is the city agreeing to be bound by this understanding that if there's no other, if we don't come up with any other way to do it, this would be the way in which we would go about paying back that, those early years of loan on the TIF? I think I did that the way I wanted to, but I'm going to have to watch Pam's new video to make sure. So it's complicated, so I'll just ask first if there are any questions from Kevin, or John, or Carter, and then we'll ask the community if they have any comments or questions about this.
So I have a question about ownership of the property. As we go forward, if we find this feasible?
Yes.
And if we proceed with the application?
Yes.
How does, how does that play into what we know of that being tied up in the AB5 scandal currently under receivership and pieces like that? Is that equated into that initial calculation? Or is, and therefore, we're, like, are we the lead applicant on this, like, going forward with the project? Are we owning that, or is it...
No, that's a really good question. There are a variety of ways that control a property or ownership of property could work itself out, none of which are really yet specific around the table. So in some instances, it might be property that the city has managed to figure out how to get ownership of, and the city itself could theoretically take responsibility for the, getting it through the, the public infrastructure improvement with the goal then of turning it over to a developer who would then develop the property and it would carry on from there. St. Albans did this a number of times, where they actually did things that were like break even, because their primary goal was to get something built on that property, right? So that's one way. It's actually not the primary way that I expect will happen here. A second way is the, the city can enter into, or can encourage, options to buy that spell out how a, a project might happen on that particular property. And so the city may not actually have any intention of owning the property, but they could be involved, we, the city, could be involved in saying, you know, we, we would encourage an option to buy on this property by a particular developer under these circumstances. Yet a third way that it could happen is, there's no need to do any of that, maybe a developer knocks on our door and says, we already have an option to buy on, you know, the building down at the end of Main Street, or the, or the Newbury Department Store, or whatever, and all we're really looking for is to make sure that the city is going to partner with us to assure that the infrastructure necessary is going to happen in order for us to try and develop the property. That's at least three different ways it could happen.
The third way sounds like my recollection of what happened up with Parveste Equipment and the, or whatever it's called now, and the helmet factory, R.
That's my understanding, too, right. Are there comments or questions from folks in the community? Yeah, Frank, go ahead.
Can I ask questions, Susan?
Sure. But you have to come to the microphone. If I make Jennifer Hopkins do it, I'm going to keep you up.
So financing capital or cash needs, cash flow is not uncommon in the private sector. We used to do it as well, which is much of what this is. The question that I have is, if you finance that cash need or cash flow need for a period of time, is that added to the loan amount, or is that come off the actual money that you have to spend on the infrastructure? And does that get calculated upfront so the city would receive? Yes, Susan.
My understanding, again, we're quickly approaching the limits of my actual understanding, right? But my understanding is that all of this would be worked out, this complex formula would be worked out in advance...
Prior to.
Before the public is invited to vote on a bond, and, and the public would be, would understand exactly what the cost of that bond is.
So the capital need would be part of the budget, basically, moving in.
That's what I understand.
Thank you.
Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, it's just, the language of this is sort of upsetting to me, because it's not clear. I mean, there's a disclaimer clause down at the bottom, which I like, which says, this declaration doesn't bind the city to make any expenditure, incur any indebtedness, or proceed with the project. But, but I, and it, and that's needed in, in some sense, because all of it is sort of driven to, to suggest that, you know, the city, the city as a whole, meaning the city and the citizens are on board with this, and the only people who have voted on this sort of intent to proceed has been the council members. And this goes, this whole process goes nowhere until the citizens agree to a significant And so what it says... And so when it says that the city of Newport intends to construct certain things, including TIF development, I mean, who is the city? We haven't agreed to this yet. And whereas the city, because they say the issuer is the city, expects to pay certain capital expenditures prior to the issuance of indebtedness for the purposes of financing costs, well, there, there won't be any indebtedness unless the citizens of the city agree to a certain amount of indebtedness. I'm not sure what the $265,000 is paying for engineering, design, and other things. For what? Engineering for a street, for new pipes, for a parking lot, which we are told is included in what we as citizens might have to pay for. So I would, I would sort of like something up there that said very close to the top, subject to the vote of the citizens of Newport, so that it was clear that this process, which we may all agree to eventually after we're fully educated with not only all the pluses, but all the minuses that could occur, might, we might agree to it, but, and I like the disclaimer part, but I just think the wording is a little bit too, we're on the, once we get on this road, it's very hard to stop it. The truck's going, it's moving, and, you know, everybody thinks it's gonna happen somehow. And I just think
Okay.
We should be a little clearer about that.
I guess, so I'll just say, around the question of the $265,000, all we've committed to at this point is a $100,000 contract with White and Burke, which the city committed to in January when it agreed on that contract. There will be next steps that will include other expenses that we don't know yet, assuming the feasibility study calls for it. We don't know that the feasibility study will even call for it yet. And at that point, I, I would, I mean, it's, it's our expectation as a council, because we've stated it pretty clearly repeatedly, that we would come back to the council and talk about what the other expenditures are that the council is approving to try and take those next steps. What the council has said at that same meeting in January is that the Walmart money, which remains at a balance of about $395,000, would be prioritized to get us through this early exploratory phase. So the expectation is there should be no out-of-pocket cost to anyone as a taxpayer in the city of Newport to get us through this part of the process. So I guess, you know, where, where I am is, there are gonna be a wide variety of things that are gonna come up, and what I'm hearing from White and Burke is that it's just smart to try and start taking on the things that we can manage earlier, because it will make it that much simpler for folks later on. And the momentum that you're talking about, right, there is gonna be a feeling of kind of growing momentum, because if we come back and say, yes, we want to do the next step with, you know, we're gonna hire an engineering firm, or whatever it might be, we're gonna come back and talk about that, and if we pass it, yes, it's another step that kind of grows the momentum. None of which gets us to the, is a done deal until we all agree that we're gonna move ahead with the application phase. Lori?
So this is just clarification, because I definitely heard what Ann said, but I want to go back to what you said in the beginning, and I think what I heard you say is that this information is related to how we pay for those first few years of the TIF, how we pay some of this back, when we don't have income. So, so it sounds like, and I think this is what Frank meant, you borrow $50,000, but you use $5,000 of it to begin paying it back.
That's my understanding too.
Okay, so I
And it may also be for paying some of the related cost application, though in our case, I'm pretty confident we've got more than enough money to pay all the application fees to get us.
Yep. So I'm just, I think what I'm saying is that this is really related to, as you said, the first few years that we're actually, you know, have applied, gotten the TIF, but we don't have the actual income from the development. We're just paying
That's right.
Okay.
Any questions from the council?
Am I reading the first paragraph to say that once specific improvements are developed and a budget is developed for them, that at that point, there's going to be a specific vote at either an annual or special meeting, i.e. a vote of the voters of the city?
The vote comes at the point where we are prepared to actually move ahead with a bond. So my understanding of the process is that it's city council's obligation to, to make a vote on whether or not to move ahead with a TIF district application. If the TIF district application is approved by the state, then the goal is to have the first several projects already planned, everybody's been educated and hopefully been brought along about what those projects are, what the cost is likely to be, et cetera. And the bond at that point would be put in front of the voters. That would be the first time the voters themselves would weigh in on whether or not they approve to move ahead.
And at that point, we would know what the specific public improvements are.
That's right.
Public improvements implies that it's essentially public infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, parking.
You know, even that is in flux right now in the state legislature. They're trying to figure out exactly what counts and what doesn't. I know that it counts, for example, EPA brownfields mitigation work. So that's another thing that would be considered a public improvement. There is some question about if something is being built in an area that might be prone to flood, does, does it count as a public improvement if you try and flood-proof the building in the process? And I think that's an open question right now in the legislature. I think they're actually working on it.
So there's
So we don't know yet fully what
Yeah, but the traditional ones.
Yes.
Roads, water, sewer.
Yes, the traditional things for sure.
Stormwater.
Streetscape.
Yeah.
Yeah. Potentially parking, parking facilities. Yeah.
Yeah, so once, once the specific parameters are defined, I'm just thinking back to using the other one as an example again, that involved a road, water, sewer, stormwater.
Yes.
Those four items.
So I would entertain a motion, if there's will on the council to make one, to pass the declaration of official intent this evening.
I'll make
I'll make my motion.
Okay, Kevin, I'll take yours as a first.
Oh, so I'll second.
And John as a second. I think we've heard plenty, but are there any further comments that have not already been made by the community? Hearing none, any further comment from the council? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. The motion passes. Thank you. Pass this down to you, Jim, as well.
In January, was the Walmart funds obligated, or like, the council technically obligate the funds to support this? I know that the first step
Yes, what the council did in January was say that they were prioritizing the use of Walmart funds for the application process for the TIF district.
Okay.
Okay, pass that to Jim. Thank you, everyone. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consideration of the bicycle and pedestrian scoping study grant, and I think Frank is still in the room. Yes? Yes? You're not done yet, Mr. Cheney?
Yes, I'm done.
Can you come and describe what we're being asked to look at here, please?
Okay, so I don't know if everybody has this.
They should.
I'm asking you to consider a new grant from the Vermont Agency of Transportation. The official title is Bicycle Pedestrian Path Scoping Study. However, really what this is, and I want to mention something else, we are partnering with NVDA on a collaborative, right? And basically, this money is designed to come up with a feasibility study and hopefully lay some groundwork, okay, to have a more formal infrastructure that will connect BB Spur to the Bluffside Farm, down to the Gateway Center, and potentially even some areas outside of this. Okay? We have some informal paths, okay? And by laying the groundwork and maybe getting some of the hurdles out of the way with the Vermont Agency of Transportation, hopefully the infrastructure development process and funding process will be easier in the future. I will say also, just to mention in a sign light, that in our work on the planning commission, both with the new bylaws that are coming out and with the municipal plan, the idea of formalizing and having a opportunity to take advantage of this type of infrastructure, especially considering that what we see as the outdoor environment and the enjoyment of the outdoor environment as being something that we're trying to promote, and central to both things, okay, for people coming in, especially from out of the area, this sort of lays the groundwork for hopefully some real infrastructure investment in this area. Ah, so $60,000 budget, and technically, however, 80% is funded by the grant. We're gonna be responsible for 20% of whatever the project, boy, the camera's close tonight. 20% of whatever the, the project is. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, can you say a word about timing, Frank?
So I would not expect, so when I say partnership, NVDA is looking at the portion with their funds from the BB Spur to the Bluffside Farm. Our portion will come second theoretically, and again, we're just in the planning stages of the scope of work. We've had some meetings, and we have a really good idea of which direction we're headed. Their part should be first. So if you want me to take a wild guess, I would assume that our portion of dollars spent, which is, I'm assuming what you're asking, won't be for 12 months. Would you say that's fair?
Yes.
Yes. That's a educated guess.
Which is to say that theoretically, it could be pushed to the 26, 27 furlongs.
We have two years to complete our portion of the project, and we haven't signed the agreement yet.
So the 20% match, cannot be in-kind services, or does it have to be actual cash?
Well, I don't know how you're gonna do in-kind services on this one. We're talking about primarily design and engineering, with maybe some permitting within the state and looking at some of the hurdles relating to wetland and stormwater, those types of things. I suspect that those professionals would be the majority of the expense, so I doubt that in-kind will work. However, again, we haven't developed the full scope of, of the project yet either.
And they ought to put out the RFPs.
No, we're just getting to that point now.
But it's reasonable to think that the city's portion could be pushed up to 26, 27.
$12,000 if it actually is $60,000 of a total budget. And again, the RFP and the full scope of work, I don't believe is, we haven't determined that yet. It's roughed out, however, individually, the idea of how much it would cost. And again, NVDA is also participating from a fund standpoint in this project.
Are we looking for a vote tonight, or is it really just
I need you to give, I need the council to approve, accept the grant so that Rick can sign the grant, award. And I do not need a resolution on this one.
Okay. Any comment, question? Let's go to the community first. Anybody have comments or questions from the community?
I'd like to put Mike Brown in charge of it.
I'm not gonna take that.
I'm sorry.
Now you can say it.
No, I'm joking.
Thanks a lot.
All right, from the council members, any comment, questions before we proceed a motion?
Um, can we turn off that? Everybody else here, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I didn't turn on tonight, I couldn't get feedback.
I'm hearing all the, just for transparency sake, I work at NVDA, but this is not at all my wheelhouse. This is definitely the transportation realm. So Doug Morton, who's been there for almost, over 20 years, and then also Liam Abate, I just learned how to say his very Italian last name, they are the leads and the people on this, so although I am, like, sharing office with them, I'm, yeah, just wanting to be transparent.
So do you intend to vote, or shall, or are you gonna recuse yourself and I vote? I just want to make sure I understand, so I know what I need to
I, I'm indifferent. I, I think this is a good move. I would, that's my, like, comment. And this is, again, it's just, it's just planned, it's not
Maybe I did misrepresent it. Doug Morton is really taking the lead on this with NVDA. He, NVDA, he's the one that approached me. I think we're including a number of different people, Bev and Carter, Carter as well. Rick actually was involved in the initial stages, trying to garner as much insight and opinion as we can as we start the project. So Carter's really more of a brainstorming, not really an administrative or administrator in this particular case.
Thank you, yeah. Just wanted to
I, we've got something
Just name it, and I don't think it's a problem.
Okay. Do I have a motion? And can somebody formulate it?
Take away.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement with, who was it actually, with NVDA or the state?
Ah, Vermont.
Vermont Agency of Transportation.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Frank, is there, am I supposed to sign this here? Do I wait and sign it with you tomorrow? Is that okay?
You can sign it tomorrow.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thanks, great.
Working through our agenda, thank you, everybody. We're up to reports from the special task forces. So John, you're up first with water and sewer, please.
Okay, well, we've been continuing to meet weekly. We have members on the committee who are very busy crunching numbers, and we're hoping that at our next meeting, which is Wednesday night
Wednesday night at 6:30, this coming Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday at 6:30, that we will be able to formulate a recommendation, which will not be any kind of final recommendation, but it'll be an interim recommendation to present to the council next week for an adjustment for, that would go into effect with the building in August.
Great. Anybody who's super invested in the reality show that is Newport, Vermont, can be watching all of these videos that Pam's been posting for us on any KTV. And there's, they're pretty, actually, if I do say so, I think they're pretty interesting conversations. So the next one is Wednesday night at 6:30, and the intention is to bring a recommendation to council next Monday night for a special meeting, for the council to take action on adjusting rates at that meeting. Any comments or questions?
Public hearing before that.
Oh, thank you so much, Pam, that's right. We, we also did decide that there's a, on Sunday eve, afternoon at 4:30, we'll do a public forum here in this room for anyone who would like to come and hear the recommendations that the task force is considering making. So that will be, you know, we'll take as long as we need to go to, as my friend would say, cuss and discuss that one. And then the water and sewer task force will meet again on Monday afternoon at 4:30 in advance of the special meeting on Monday night, so that if they've heard anything that makes them want to change the recommendation to council, they'll have an opportunity to do so before the council's special meeting. Jennifer?
So I am signed up for comments under general comments, but it pertains to water and sewer.
Great.
Okay. So if I'm not mistaken, there's still a receivable on the city books for the state prison.
Actually, I can speak to that really quickly, because I, I've answered that question for you. It is not on the audit, as I understand it. And I've had conversation in the last week and a half to instruct that we are no longer trying to go after that money.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Just, just to be clear, because that may have gone right over everybody's heads, there has been an open question for some time about roughly $135,000 bill.
$135,910.
There you go. Jennifer knows the full amount, and I didn't. The treasurer assures me, because he's looked at the fine print and I haven't, that that was actually removed in this most recent audit.
It was.
And we have followed up to make it clear that we are, I followed up with our treasurer's office to make it clear that we're no longer billing for that amount. So that money has been removed from the audit and, and from our expectation. And we've talked about that with water and sewer as well. And we've talked about that with Water and Sewer as well. Great question. Any other questions? Ann?
And the reason that it was removed from our expectations is, is that we do not believe that there was an error in, on the part of the water meter. Water meter was tested and retested. And we believe that the billing, the appropriate payment was made at the time.
Any other questions? Okay, and no action needed tonight, except to formally announce that those two meetings are happening. One this Wednesday at 6:30 here in this room. The second one on Sunday at 4:30, which will be a public forum. So invite all your friends and neighbors and bring popcorn. That's our chance to really go deep into whatever recommendations it is that the council is, that the task force is making. And then still another at 4:30 on Monday afternoon for the task force to reconsider anything they need to. Before, assuming tonight we agree to go ahead with the special meeting, we hold that special meeting on Monday night next week. Thank you, John. Appreciate all your work on it. And who else is in the room? Carl's in the room, who's been a part of that task force. Am I missing anybody else?
Jennifer.
Jennifer, thank you. Jennifer's on that task force. Thank you. This really has been a significant amount of energy, and it's not over when we make decisions a week from tonight. Everybody's aware that we're gonna keep on working. It's just the first step in what will be a pretty long and drawn-out process. All right, Carter, can you bring us up to date on the, let's see if I get my own title right. Financial reporting and fiscal practices task force.
Pretty good, pretty good. I'm so tempted to kind of branch from Jennifer's question of, hey, there's still this number on the budget. And that's one piece of one of the priorities for the task force, which is cleaning up the ledger, looking at the accounts, what's still active, and trying to streamline that process. So the main thing that we're working on right now, and hope to have a recommendation, is right now we are negotiating a contract with Nemrek, so that they can help assist cleaning up the accounts and also bringing us online. So there's a piece of that, the cloud-based platform. So shifting to that, just to have that, oh, like, basically accident for, not forgiveness, I'm thinking of like an insurance thing, but like catastrophic, something happens, we still have all of our files, and that's, that's remotely stored, encrypted, safe, but the way we need to be moving. And another priority that is creating cash flow reports. What is included in the attachments is something that Jim worked his tail off, and it's getting us in the right direction. But being able to easily generate those reports is something that we're gonna try to work with Nemrek to create. And so that's kind of, I guess, mid, mid priority. Other priority would be, we need to get our financials in order to then turn to the banks and lending officers to say, hey, this is proof behind our pudding with what we're asking. So we need to get our ledger in order, accounts in order, to then turn around with these reports to ask for funding to make sure we are good with our cash flow issues. And then long-term-ish priorities that we are still looking at to address is, what were they called? There, there, there's so many different verbiage, but the accounts where we were paying into them-
The sinking fund accounts.
Sinking fund, thank you. So addressing the sinking funds and the gaps that exist there. So still pieces to chew on, but we're hoping to have a recommendation to council by next, the special meeting with that contract.
With Nemrek.
With Nemrek, sorry. With Nemrek, to help us with that first step to get all the other ducks in a row. And yeah, I really just have to say thank you. And Lori's in the room here. But there's just a number of brains that are on this that it's just really great to be a part of and hear that conversation going back and forth. So many different perspectives. And I, I left Friday's meeting like, yeah, we got this. At least we got, we got the best eyes on it. So, yeah, I think that's in sure.
Great. Any questions or comments from folks in the community? Here too, just, I wanna repeat the affirmation. People have been really committed. Friday afternoons at 4 o'clock, a really hot time for a committee meeting every week. So real, huge gratitude to the folks who've been working on this. And here too, next week is just the first, in this case, probably small step, that just begins to lay the groundwork so we can work on the, the questions of responding to the debt and making sure that we created an appropriate cash flow so the city can manage all of its finances. And I'll add that Jim and Stacy have put in significant time and effort to help us get to where we are already. And Robin has been covering a lot while they've been doing that. So gratitude to the folks in the clerk treasurer's office as well. Any other comments from Kevin, or John, or Carter?
No.
Okay. Great. Then I think we are up to comments by members of public, which I often fly right by. Anybody else besides the one that Jennifer was gonna make?
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Sweet. Thank you.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay.
It's all yours, Carl.
All right. Carl, King, President of Newport. I just wanna report to you guys, as of Wednesday, I was elected commander of the American Legion, Post 21 here in Newport. Thank you. I just wanna assure that we are involved in community, Americanism, youthism, and we're gonna be here whenever and wherever you guys would need us. So if you ever need it, reach out to us.
Great.
Thank you very much.
All right, nobody else on the list? All right, then moving on to new business. Let's start with Carter. You have anything you wanna add tonight? John?
No, thanks.
Kevin?
Yeah. A lot of positive comments about the improvements out the park.
Yeah, that deserves a round of applause. Thanks for the act this afternoon at 4:30 when I drove by. It was great. Thank you, Kevin. Anything else? All right, Jim, any new business for us?
No.
Okay, and I don't have anything on new business, old business. Carter?
None.
John?
None.
Kevin?
No, thank you.
Okay, Jim?
No.
All right, and I have just two quick items. One is, I wanna make a quick report on, sorry, gotta make sure I got the two in my head. I've got the first one, we'll see if I remember the second one when I get to it. Newport Downtown Development hosted a meeting on Friday for four hours with some representatives from the state who came and focused on Newport for a day. It was fascinating. We had Wanda Manoli and two of her high-level staff from the Office of Building and General Services. We had Lindsay Curly from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. We had Brett Long, I hope I've got his last name right, who is the deputy director for the Department of Economic Development. We had Jessica Hartleben from VEPSE, the Vermont Economic Progress Council. We had Kevin, no, sorry, Neil Cammons, whose title is gonna escape me, but works basically in funding water projects across the state, water and stormwater projects, was with us. I'm missing at least one or two, but it was quite a group. And Andrew Touche joined us, representing council for that meeting. We met from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. We spent a considerable amount of time helping them understand the detailed master plan and the arrangement with Whiten Burke and the first steps on the TIF district feasibility question. And then we also had an extended conversation about the work that Brian Gray has done. He was with us, along with Dave LaForce from NDD. The same presentation, he didn't do the whole presentation, but the same content that he offered to city council, I believe it was two weeks ago. We, we talked about that. Then we talked a lot about what the state's variety of interests are in Newport, including the courthouse, the boardwalk, the state parking lot that's right below this building, the Hebert Building, and their long-term interest in a new courthouse. And just tried to get all of that out on the table. And then we went for a walk and walked the entire downtown area to look at kind of what they're thinking. And it was extremely, it was, it was an invitation that went out at the request of the governor. After we met with the governor about three weeks ago, he invited, he asked us to invite that list to come and join us. So I just wanted to give you all a heads up that that's going. It didn't lead to any, we didn't expect it to lead to conclusive answers about next steps. But I think everybody left here feeling really positive about the energy in the room. And, and clearly interested in trying to work together. We all agreed, whatever proposals get put on the table don't work unless they work for both the state and the city of Newport. It's gotta be a, a hand-in-glove operation. Then I, I know there was one other thing I wanted to mention, and I really apologize, because I didn't write it down when I went through my head. So we're gonna have to skip that and add it to next week. So that's all for old business. Our next item agenda is to set a special council meeting for Monday night, April 28th, 2025, at 6 p.m. to consider recommendations from the Water and Sewer Task Force and the Financial Reporting and Fiscal Practices Task Force. Do I have a motion to approve that meeting?
I will make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, who wants to make a motion to adjourn tonight?
I'll make that motion.
There we go. Motion to adjourn at 7:34.
And I'll second.
And the motion has a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.